I need it.
Let me call you back.
All right, thank you very much. Sorry for the delay. I did. I don't think I'm, I'm not coming through on the computer, am I, on the sound?
Yes, I can hear you.
Excuse me, the June eighth, two thousand twenty. Well, that was perfect. Pardon me. Man, the June eighth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees hereby called to order at five thirty-three P M. This governing board meeting is conducted pursuant to A B three sixty-one and Y C C D resolution number two one dash two-two point. Already. Two-two. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for your patience, especially with the chair, as we continue to navigate this virtual platform. We welcome the board members and others who are participating in person or via Zoom. Please be advised that everyone participating via Zoom video or call has been muted with the exception of the board member, student trustee, and chancellor. We also welcome any members of our district community and the members of the public reviewing the meeting live via YouTube. Members of the public are welcome to record this meeting using their own personal devices. The district will also make the recording available on the Y C C D YouTube channel for thirty days in accordance with our board policy. As a reminder, board members are asked to quote raise their hands via Zoom when they wish to speak. Everyone is encouraged to mute their audio and not speaking to minimize disruption. The board is open to receiving public comments. The published agenda requested that public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting by email. Public comments will read aloud by staff at the appropriate time during the meeting. Persons seeking to make an in-real-time public comment may do so at the time of the agenda item and are asked to to use the raise hand Zoom feature. Uh, pledge of allegiance. I would ask that trustee Margie Balkan uh walk us through and uh do the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, trustee Balkan. Roll call, item four-point-three establishment of quorum. I would now ask the board stenographer to conduct the roll call for attendance, please.
Thank you, Chair Garrett. Uh, for the trustees that are attending virtually, if you can, in addition to confirming that you're present, also respond to the three questions listed in the agenda, which are, can you hear me well? Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end until now? And do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting? Uh, student trustee-elect Maria Marquez.
Present and yes to all three.
Trustee Antonio Aguilar. Trustee or vice chair Beggs. Trustee Balkan. Trustee Hinton. Trustee Nicolau.
Present, yes to all three.
Trustee Richards.
Here and yes to all three.
Chair Garrett.
Present.
Form is established.
Okay, item four-point-four, report out from closed session. We only have one item this evening, report out during closed session by a vote of seven to zero with zero members absent or zero members abstained. Uh, the Board of Trustees approved the appointment of Dr. Trevor Albertson, sorry, Trevor Stewart, we have two Trevers now, uh, to serve as the vice chancellor of Educational Sports Services effective June twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. His employment agreement will be discussed later in the agenda by a motion or motion made by Nancy Hinton, seconded by Margie Balkan. The vote was seven yes, no, uh, zero no's, zero abstentions, zero not present for vote, and the motion carried. Other than that, there was no other items to report out from closed session. Moving on now to item four-point-five swearing-in of new student trustee. I would invite Chancellor Young to conduct the swearing-in of the student trustee-elect Maria Marquez.
Let me see if I can pin her.
Yes.
Chancellor. If we can get your mic for sound thinking.
All right. Maria Marquez, are you ready to take over the office? And you have the oath in front of you. And would you please recite the oath? Raise your right hand and recite the oath.
I, Maria Marquez, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Con- Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, thou bear the tr- true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you. Welcome.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Welcome, and we thank you for your commitment to your fellow students and your participation with us. So we have a student voice and and um get that perspective at the student level on on what's going on in the district. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move on now to item four-point-six, changes in order of business. And we've had one request to move item uh eight-point-four prior to eight-point-three. Are there any other uh requests, the changes in order of business? Okay, moving right along. Approval of minutes of the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two Board of Trustees regular meeting, item four-point-seven. Give you a moment to review, or if you've done so already, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I move to approve.
A motion made by uh Margie Balkan. Margie Balkan. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Nancy Hinton. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar. Vice Chair Beggs. Trustee Balkan. Hi. Trustee Hinton. Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Yes.
That is seven-zero motion carrying.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to item four-point-eight, public comments. This time, I ask the board stenographer to first read aloud any public comments received via email and introduce in real-time public comment requests. Please note, all email correspondence relating to this meeting will become part of the board minutes. I already have the two requests to speak on item eight-point-one-two. So we'll wait till we get to that specific item to allow you time to to make your comments. Any other public comments, board stenographer?
We have not received any additional uh email, public comments.
Any raised hands?
There are no raised hands in the Zoom room.
Okay.
Seeing anyone going up to the podium.
Okay, we'll move right along then to Board Committee reports, Finance Committee meeting. The Finance Committee, made of myself, trustees Aguilar, and trustee Dr. Milton Richards, met this past Monday, the sixth, at eleven A M., and uh we discussed the current ongoing uh district budget. Uh, you know, our, obviously, our focus is to see how efficient we are. And this is a regular occurring item, and and we're approximately six percent below uh budget projections. So I I thank everyone for being efficient and and directing our dollars where they need to be, and particularly our our two colleges uh for their efforts and in in maintaining our budgets at their current level. We got an F T S update. And uh first, I want to give some time because I know uh Dr. Richards, trustee Dr. Richards, had some comments. So uh, Dr. Richards.
Well, I was just uh very concerned that we've uh initiated a uh full-up, full-blown marketing and promoting uh strategy, and we've given away free tuition, and we're, and we have less students than last year. And I really believe we need to have a uh a discussion and maybe even a task force to really look at how we're marketing, promoting. And frankly, I'm tired of hearing how much better Merced Community College is than us and how much easier they are to work with. But I I think the numbers, you know, we need to get back to sixteen thousand. I'm not happy with fourteen thousand. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it it it's it's interesting that, you know, our staff has done a great job, though. I mean, when you look at us compared to statewide, I mean, we are growing, where others are not growing. Uh, and I think that has a lot to do with the campaigning and all that. We know, what we discussed is, okay, the free for me is great, but now we need to work on making sure we, you know, and I know everyone is, but we're just keeping a a a focus here on retaining those students going forward. I know everyone else feels the same way because we may have a discussion down the road when it comes to F T S, and this is what we discussed. Are we a sixteen thousand F T S district, or are we a fourteen thousand F T S district? And what does that look like for our future going forward? What's our, what's our footprint, educational footprint now in the community with a lower amount of full-time equivalent students? So that was the the gist of the discussion. We then had a dis- uh discussion, and we will get into this later, about the twenty-two, twenty-three uh proposed budgets. I'll save my comments for later. And then we had a uh updated discussion on what we had at the prior month, Board Finance Committee, and that had to do with um costs associated with deferred maintenance projects and certain maintenance projects uh at the district at Modesto Junior College and at Columbia College. And what we asked Judy Lanchester to do is squeeze that down to what she sees as the highest priority projects, either those that would classify as deferred maintenance or an absolute uh a need, and we'll, again, we'll get further into that when we talk about the uh proposed budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. So with that, does my fellow trustees, either Dr. Milton Richards or Antonio Aguilar, have any further comments? Okay, moving on now to item five-point, or pardon me, does anyone else have any questions on board finance? Sorry about that. Okay, moving on now to item five-point-two, Board Policy Committee Report, and I'll turn that over to the Policy Committee Chair Nancy Hinton.
We'll have a further report this evening on that, but um from Kimberly Gibbs on the actual policies, but we're asking um the board to approve the second readings tonight with the changes that have been made. And um we will not be meeting again until October because um October tenth will be the next uh meeting of the policy and procedures because of the district not meeting until, or the faculty not meeting until um August. So um with the normal rotation, we'll be meeting uh in October. You guys have, do you or trustee Nicolau have anything to say? Nope. Okay, that's my report.
Thank you, Nancy. We'll move on now to item six-point-one, Association Reports, and we'll start off with Associated Students of Modesto Junior College, A S M J C President, and and out of respect and fairness for the new president, state your name so we get it right, and and we know you, and maybe a little bit of background about yourself for everyone.
Hi, can everyone um hear and see?
We can hear you, but we can't see you yet.
Okay, I apologize. I'll try to fix my background.
There you are. Oh, yep, got you now.
Okay, hi, everyone. My name is Neilani Pitzer, and I'm currently the president of A S M J C. I'm majoring in political science. Um, and this is my second year in A S M J C. I'm so glad to be here and to meet everyone. So for our A S M J C report, we are currently in summer training, and we have a few activities planned for the summer. On July fifteenth, A S M J C is doing a mission peak hike as a team bonding activity. We also will be going with Trio, E O P N S, and access and outreach and student ambassadors. On August twelfth through fifteenth, we have a leadership retreat where we will go away for about four days and do lots of team bonding activities. Currently, A S M J C is working on recruiting and interviewing candidates, and we're glad to report that we have had a bunch of people apply, and we're currently in the process of interviewing them and building relationships as a team. This team has a chance to create a new foundation as we are gradually returning to in-person events. We are very excited to serve and represent the student body. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Neilani, and and welcome, and we look forward to working with you in your new capacity. Does anybody have any questions for the A S M J C president? Okay, thank you again very much. We do not have a report tonight from the A S C C president. So we'll move right along to California School Employees Association, C S E A Chapter four-twenty, President Amy Lovett. Amy, are you with us?
Yeah. Are you able to hear me?
Yep, we can see you too.
Perfect. Okay. Good evening, Chair Garrett, fellow trustees, and Chancellor Young. We close out the month of May with the celebration of California School Employees Week. On behalf of Chapter four-twenty, we would like to thank Chancellor Young, Graciela Molina, and Kimberly Gibbs for giving out goodies and meeting many of our classified professionals while taking advantage of the photo op. However, during this week-long event celebration, it has not gone unnoticed that there is lacking representation from the Board of Trustees. We are just about to close out the old year and to welcome the new year with the theme for Classified Professionals of Y C C D. We bring it every day. Negotiations is still underway. However, in light of what has happened and currently happening, there are issues and concerns regarding the Sunshine Article eleven duty hours, specifically in regards to remote work not being properly addressed by the district. A request has been submitted for immediate action to address the process and protocols to mitigate further contentious issues among district college administrators, leadership team, and classified professionals. I would like to thank C S E Chapter four-twenty for the opportunity to speak to the Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the president of CSEA? And Amy, thank you for for giving up your valuable time. It was nice to meet you and your kids for a little coffee chap, chat up there in Ripon. So I want to thank you for giving up your your time that way. So thank you. We'll move on now to Faculty Representative of the Board, Alan McKissick. Alan?
Evening. Am I?
Not yet. When it turns red, you'll you'll have gone live.
How's that?
Not yet.
I may, I may just have to project my voice, or Graciela will. Okay. You can tell I haven't done this in a while.
No, I don't think so.
Hello, is it working now? Okay. You can tell I haven't done this in a while. And thank you for this opportunity to address you. During the last board meeting, I was traveling on a long postponed trip to see family. So this is my first in-person, in-person board meeting in literally years, and it's a great feeling, pexiglass and all. I got to reach around the pexiglass and shake some hands. General meetings of the faculty associations are now in hiatus, as are many other bodies critical to our governance. While others, like the board and its committees, continue, I attended Monday's meeting of the Board Policy Committee, where I heard that committee's usual conscientious review of district policy, and again, as usual, they earnestly sought out input of our constituencies. As Chair Hinton stated earlier, the committee will not be meeting again until the regular semester, and for that, for that very reason, I don't live very far from the east campus, and I often walk across the campus, and I reflect that it's a very beautiful campus, but so quiet and so unpopulated it has been. And I'm imagining seeing the campus full of our campus community, and I'm getting more and more excited. It's easier and easier to visualize. As I contemplate the college reopening, I think about what I'll be doing in the fall, teaching my classes in person in Founder's Hall. I believe my own situation may reflect a lot of instruction in our district, most of it probably. Having taught remotely, I had to learn a lot of technology, a lot of new techniques, and I believe I'm a considerably better teacher, that I can deliver on the college mission better than I could before. I have more tools, more ideas, more experience that I can put to use where I really want to be in my classroom. So I think I'm not alone in that regard. I think our college, in terms of instruction to students, is coming through this in many ways a great deal stronger. So again, I'm looking forward to that. I'm looking forward to meeting with people, including our board members, in person more often, and thank you again for this opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions for Alan McKissick? And thank you, Alan. We'll move on now to the Academic Senate Activity Reports, and we'll start off with Modesto Junior College Academic Senate President Aisha Sala. Sala, I get that sometimes I screw up, but you'll correct me, I know, so.
No problem. It's Sala.
That's right.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Chair Garrett, trustees, and Chancellor Young, thank you all for your time today. Senate's not meeting over the summer unless a situation arises that would require calling for an emergency meeting. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that nothing, nothing like that does happen. That said, many faculty are still hard at work over summer. Some are teaching. Others are continuing to do committee work or other special projects. Some are likely doing all of that, and then some, and others are taking some much-needed and earned vacation time. While most committees do not meet over over summer, those related to our guided pathways work will continue to meet and do the work necessary to support the transition to schools that was approved at the end of spring semester. Our institutional effectiveness and accreditation committee will also continue to work over summer, and we're looking forward to our accreditation site visit this coming fall. Myself and Dean Betancourt chair this committee, and I'm happy to announce the selection of Chad Redwing as our new faculty accreditation co-chair. I appreciate his willingness to help us do this important work and look forward to supporting him in his new role. Lastly, I want to publicly thank Kathy Haskin for her service and support in Senate. We wish her a happy retirement and look forward to celebrating her as many ways as possible before her official time with us ends. The Senate passed a resolution in honor of Kathy at our last meeting, and while her contract may be ending this month, she's made lifelong friends while with us, and we look forward to celebrating her as much as we can. That concludes my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Any questions for the Academic Senate President of Modesto Junior College? And Aisha, thank you very much. We'll move on now to Columbia College Academic Senate President, President Lana Von Epps. Lana, are you with us?
I do not see her in the room.
Okay. Well, if she pops up, we'll give her some appropriate time so she can address the the board and the broader community. There is no report tonight from LTAC, if I have my information correct, in your round, okay? And that moves us right to Yosemite Faculty Association, YFA President Dimitri Karyotis. Dimitri is meeting with us live again, as he did up in Columbia, so.
I don't know how to do this here. Is this, is this where I'm to stand? Is this?
Yeah.
Look like a firing squad is the. I mean, you know, very good, very good. Feel the love. I like that. Greetings, Chair Garrett, trustees, and Chancellor Young. Good to see you in person again. I return to the two main, two main subjects I addressed last month, non-instructional faculty not being allowed to work online remotely and negotiations. The last time I reported to the board, I shared my concern that prohibiting counselors from working remotely online would negatively affect students. Yesterday and today, I counseled students at MJC and witnessed firsthand how this move has undesirably impacted students. Unlike last year, when students rarely waited more than thirty minutes because of the flexibility resulting from the online remote option, over the past two days, I repeatedly saw many students wait nearly two hours to meet with a counselor. Some students simply went away. Multiple times, I reached out to students in the online queue only for my calls to go unanswered. The Free For Me campaign is clearly working, yet this recent restriction doesn't give our employees the ability to adequately serve our students. YFA remains committed to creating a short-term remedy to improve this problem while a long-term solution is worked out. I'm going to go off script for a while because I feel really emotional after working with students for the first time, two years in person, which was wonderful. But I'm agitated because our wait times were so long, and I'm also agitated because so many students I saw just go away. I don't know if they'll come back. So at this time when we're all concerned about enrollment and about getting our numbers back up, as one trustee stated ten minutes ago, I find it troubling that we're shackled to serve our students as adequately as as we have in the past, and I hope we can soon. Back to script. In my last report, I also shared my concern for negotiations, which had drastically departed from a reached understanding at the table. My concern is greater now, not only because we didn't reach a formal agreement on benefits by the May thirty-one deadline, but because since the last board meeting, no actual negotiating has taken place. Indeed, both teams met, but the district team had no authority to actually negotiate, making YFA wonder why we are at the table at all and whether district is interested. I fear where this slow erosion of genuine communication will lead us if continued. I conclude my report.
Dimitri, thank you. Any questions for the YFA president? Dimitri, thank you again. It's nice to have you here in person. Thank you. Okay, with that, do we see Lana Von Epps in the in the waiting area? I don't want to miss out on her. No? Okay. Moving on to six point two, Presentation Updates, Yosemite Community College District, Chancellor Young.
Employees are very important to us, and especially those who have contributed many years of service. So at this point, we want to recognize our retirees, and there is a video to share with you. Just want to thank all our retirees and retirees-to-be for all the years of service that you have contributed to the district. So with that, I also want to recognize that this is the last meeting. For another retiree that we have, Vice Chancellor Dr. G. H. Javaher Report. And although I don't see her here, I want to recognize, oh, I'm sorry, she's behind the screen. Excuse me. I want to recognize Dr. Jennifer Zalid. She is not retiring, but she is leaving YCCD for something bigger and better, to be the new president superintendent at Antelope Valley College. Congratulations. With that, it's time for our college reports and for us to receive an update at the colleges. First one up is Columbia College, Dr. Train.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Chair Garrett, Chancellor Young, Board Trustee, community members, and colleague. Tonight, I'd like to give a brief update. The good news is that Columbia College is up on our enrollment steady. We're up for spring, and we're up for the summer. So our team is working hard. We feel that we are steadily growing and getting the enrollment back. And having said that, I really feel the passion, the dedication from everyone on campus. And having said that, we really strategically look at how are we going to bring back enrollment by working with our community members? So during the last month, our team heavily visited the high school because we realized that that is our feeder school. We went to all the feeder school, Bret Hart, Silver, Somerville, Bret Hart, Sonora, and Calaveras, and we repeatedly heard from the principal, the superintendent, how do we get our student to Columbia campus? We want our student on Columbia College. So our team, our leadership team have a partnership. Starting in the fall, we will be able to transfer, transport, bus each of the high school student to Columbia College, and the partnership is to offer a half-a-unit guidance course, so that way the high school has an introduction to college, introduction to Columbia College as search. But in addition to that, we recognize that in order for the student to feel that they are Columbia College, we are going to issue Columbia ID on that first day. So if you can imagine, our transportation will work out the logistics, but the student would get picked up from the high school, go to Columbia, college, spend eight hours, get half a unit. Once they're done, they get an ID, then say, congratulations, you are a Columbia College. And when they're there eight hours, we're going to come and introduce the different CTE program as well as pathways, so that out of that partnership, in addition to that, the high school were very, very generous. They said, we will advertise for you. So we're going to be able to put banners throughout all the high school fences as you drive up that say Free For Me. So for Columbia College, Free For Me does work, and it working very well. You'll see within the fall, we're going to really be out in the community, working with all the different organization, even the retail Walmart, Safeway, to get the word out for Columbia College. So on that end, the enrollment continue working with the marketing firm. The only other thing I'd like to report is that did you know that ninety-three percent of the workforce has a LinkedIn profile? And in order to prepare our students so that they are ready for the workforce, we have partnered, well, LinkedIn has invited us for a visit. So the student ambassador, the supervisor from the high school, as well as our workforce partner, we will be touring LinkedIn to learn more about LinkedIn, how LinkedIn can be beneficial to our student on June fifteen. But when LinkedIn shared that data with me, I was, wow, ninety-three percent of the workforce has LinkedIn profile. In order to prepare our student, we need to get our student to understand the magnitude and how important it is to keep the connection and network. So we're excited to host another LinkedIn visit on June fifteen for our students and community members. Thank you.
My turn? Good evening. It's good to be in this room after, what, a couple of years now? It's a different feeling. And when I sit here and see all of you sitting around in this room, I also think that we talk about remote working. You know, MJC has been a family. I heard that many, many times since I came to MJC. If I'm always remote from my family, what would be that family culture? How do I embrace that and understand that? I think that's something that we have to deeply engage in as we move forward, that yes, remote work is convenient, remote work can be productive, but the campus culture and the field, how do we maintain that forward? There are many of the people that I have not met during the pandemic. So that's, that's definitely one thing that comes to my mind when I'm sitting here face to face with many of you. Last month was a mental awareness month. This month is pride celebration, and we are doing both of those with equal jest so that all of the students can be welcomed to this campus. When we talk about these celebrations, for me, this is not just about diversity. This is about a continuum of diversity, enrollment, and finances. Unless we have a diverse. Unless we have a diverse body of students on campus, unless we can enroll them, we do not increase our enrollments. That's where the connection between diversity and enrollment comes. We have to have all of those kids who are not coming to us or for some reason do not feel that they belong here. They need to be coming back to us, and we have to create that environment so that they can come here and they can feel that they belong. With that objective, when we are celebrating our second pride celebration month in the history of MJC's 100 years, I'm quite proud that, yes, despite the pandemic, we are moving in the right direction in welcoming all the students, everyone into this campus and making them feel that they belong. We'll continue that journey. Lots has been talked about in terms of enrollment, and we know that statewide, if not nationwide, we are facing a crisis. COVID, yes, it has taken a dent in enrollment across the nation, sometimes at 20%, sometimes maybe more in different situations. We also started when we looked at the enrollments. We declined about 20% from 20. When I'm looking at the last two semesters of enrollment, both for spring 2022 and as of now, summer of 2022, we have stemmed that rot. Now, stemmed that rot does not mean that we would recover or recoup all that 20% lost. Spring, we are about 2% ahead in FTES. Summer, I think last week, we were about 5.5% ahead in FTES. So when we compare that with a 14% or 15% loss, yes, we are still losing. We have been quite down. We are slowly recovering out. But I take a lot of pride in this team and the activities that this college is doing because of the fact that we are swimming against the tide. When the state declines by 20% and we increase by 2% or 3% or even stand still, that requires a lot of effort. Now, our work doesn't stop there. As I look forward to what's going to be the future of education, that's where I need to focus on. That rather than asking for the students coming to college, how do we take the college out to the students? One specific area that I would like to make all of you aware of. You might have heard about Dr. Vicky Malvina Trask, what wonderful work she does with our lifelong learning area. In terms of numbers, a unit which was $400,000 in the red two years back, this year is posting $1.8 million to the black. That's a significant swing. But hidden under those numbers is the fact that that has been accomplished by taking education to different variety of places. Employers like Fito Lee, employers like Blue Diamond, where we are saying that, hey, you know what? You cannot come to college because you're working. Why can't the college come to you? If we can really promote this message well, and if we can really take the college out, it serves multiple purposes. One, enrollment gain. Two, relationship with the local business communities. Three, the students that we've been missing for several months, or if not years now, the minority male population, they are working there. We can get back into our fold, and we would continue our journey in that area. MJC's Free For Me campaign for fall has started. Too early to report how that, which way the wind is blowing and how much we would gain. But given our recent success, I am reasonably confident this would be our third consecutive semester that we will be reporting an enrollment gain. Looking forward to more of these meetings when we can be face to face, across each other, shake hands, smile, and read the body language. There's any question for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you. Last, I want to acknowledge the work of the deans of CTE. Pedro Mendez at MJC and Steve Amador at Columbia College for the work that they have done in preparing a statement of needs that was submitted to the Townsend Group, which is working to help both colleges obtain some grants for its FIRE programs. It's, the requested amount is $2 million for the Columbia, for the MJC FIRE program and $9 million for the Columbia College FIRE program. So the two congressmen who are working with the Townsend Group, Josh Harder and Congressman McLean Talk. So I want to also express my thanks to both congressmen's staff for their assistance with our grant application. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Young. Any questions for our chancellor? Okay, thank you again, Chancellor Young. We'll move on now to item seven, action items consent. And those items are listed on the agenda as 7.2 through 7.9. First, does any trustee want to pull an item off consent for separate consideration? Point one, it's going twice. No? Okay, all entered.
Still moved.
If I may, I do have corrections to note.
Yes.
So item 7.9, consent agenda personnel, on page one or your page 45. The personnel transaction item requires a correction to a name listed. It's actually the first name, Hans Hasselmann. It is two N's, so it's just to make note of that correction. As well on page two or your page 46, the short-term appointee list requires corrections to the end date for Nancy Holmes. The end date should read 6/30/23, not 22. And I believe there's one more. My apologies. Sergio Lopez, campus safety officer, campus safety, that start date should read May 13th, not 31st.
Okay. Any further corrections? Okay. All right, Dr. Richards, you made a motion. Does your motion include those changes and revisions?
It does. Thank you very much.
Hey, is there a second?
I second the motion.
A second by trustee Jenny Nicolau. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Beggs. Trustee Balkan.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Nicolau.
Yes.
Trustee Garrett.
Yes.
Vote as 7-0, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to action items for discussion, 8.1, board policy, second reading, and I'll turn this over to the policy chair, trustee Nancy Hinton.
Actually, I'll turn this over to Kimberly.
Thank you, Chair, committee chair Hinton. Trustees, good evening. I have a report to give out to you from the Board Policy Committee. You have nine policies before you, and of those, we have changes or revisions that were recommended from the Board Policy Committee to policies 27, 25, 71, 60, and 7400. I am here to answer any questions regarding any of those revisions that were provided to you or to any of the other six policies that are before you prior to board discussion and action on this particular item.
Any questions for Kimberly on those recommendations and changes as stated? Again, as Kimberly stated, this is a second reading, so is there a motion to approve those listed policies?
Still moved.
Moved by trustee Margie Balkan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Nancy Hinton. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar.
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs. Trustee Balkan.
Aye.
Trustee Hinton.
Aye.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
See Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Garrett.
Yes.
Vote as 7-0, motion carries.
Moving on now to item 8.2, board policy, first reading. Kimberly, are we going to punt that to you again?
Thank you so much, Chair Garrett. There are two policies before you for the first reading, and based upon the recommendation from the chancellor's office, which was given at Monday's meeting, Board Policy Committee meeting, the Board Policy Committee is recommending that the full board accepts the recommendation to strike through lines in both policies 4010 and 7342, which refer to Cesar Chavez Day, Native American Day, and Juneteenth, and await state and federal mandates to add those specific holidays as local holidays. Additionally, the Board Policy Committee would like to recommend that both colleges consider a campus-wide commemoration in observance of Cesar Chavez Day, Native American Day, and Juneteenth to begin with the month of June this month. A commemoration and observance of the Juneteenth holiday, if possible. The Board Policy Committee would like to work with Chancellor Young to discuss possible implementation of this recommendation if it is accepted by the board. This concludes the recommendations from the policy committee, and I'm sure they can add to that last particular recommendation. But I am happy to answer any questions that you might have in regards to the revisions to these two policies.
Hey, any questions for Kimberly regarding what was just stated, and this is a first reading, so now is the chance to add any input? Okay. We will move on now to, and we, this was a change in the order of business. So we're going to take item 8.4 out of order before we move back to item 8.3. So 8.4 is an energy service contract, and I believe our vice chancellor, Trevor Stewart, not to be confused with our new vice chancellor, but Trevor Stewart's going to lead us off in this discussion.
Trustees, it's great to be here. The presentation was included in your packet. The Board Finance Committee has reviewed this information two times already, but I want to make sure that the full board has the opportunity to hear about this project. So we're talking 11 months of work that have gone on with the district, starting with Judy Lanchester, the senior facilities director. It's included facility staff, the electricians, it's included campus input from the MJC, all the way to installing lights in the classroom to see how these new fixtures will work better for our students. So go ahead. So the proposal that we're bringing to you will reduce our operating costs for electricity by 45% and reduce overall energy consumption by 57%. Over the life of this project, the 30-year proposal cash flow is a $15 million lifecycle saving. So there are many parts to our project, including some solar, some electric vehicle charging stations. The bulk of what people will see will be the lights in the classroom on the MJC campuses. We have some work to do as it relates to reducing our off-peak usage, that means the evening and overnight, as well as evaluating our temperature settings, such as adjusting the temperatures by one or two degrees as a significant savings to our overall. By doing this project, we're also achieving goals set forward by the California Community College Chancellor's Office as it relates to sustainability. Here's a view of what the carport would look like on the MJC campus. 92 covered parking stalls. And primarily, what we're looking at, most of the impact is in the 11,000 fixtures, light bulbs on the east and west campus. So we're looking at 2.7 million annual kilowatt hour savings. With, as we'll look at the total cash flow savings, most of that cash flow savings is directly related to these light bulbs. 66% energy savings, and again, the improvement in the lighting, I think, is going to be what is most striking for instruction at the MJC campus. Slide. There is the ability through San Joaquin County to get a grant-funded rebate for our EV charging stations. So essentially, we're getting an 80% rebate on the cost of installing some more. And the off-peak and the building temperature settings is a more difficult thing to do. We are working on the off-peak already in our facilities department, evaluating plans on how we clean buildings. Instead of leaving an entire building on, can you go floor by floor, room by room? We're already starting to work on some of that. But the building temperature settings will be conversations we have with the MJC community and evaluate. Next slide. So the total project cost is approximately 5.3 million with modest irrigation district rebate, bringing it down just below 5.1 million. We're after a California Energy Commission 1% program, and that is a $3 million loan from the CEC. That comes to us at a 1% cost of interest, and we'll get into some cash flow on that. That is repaid over a nine-year period, essentially by using the immediate savings that we are achieving by doing this project. And there you can see the cash flow on that. So again, overall cost, a little over $5 million, significant savings over the period of time. Again, here are some chancellor's office sustainability goals that this project has helped us achieve. So I talked about this already. We will be net positive cash as it relates to day one. So this really is a win-win project, essentially low-hanging fruit, a project that we had started in certain buildings, but not necessarily across the campus. Next slide. And the company that we're working with does have 17 years of proven experience with California Community Colleges. What we are looking at is essentially a fixed cost contract. So there are no change orders. Any price escalation is borne by the vendor, not by us moving forward. So I know that solar has been a concern of us in this district and some solar projects we've done in the past. And I have an email from them that in their 17 years, they've had one inverter go bad. It was replaced, and not at the cost of the district, but at the cost of the vendor. So, and very comfortable with working with this company, and it's a great project. The cost for this project is included in the tentative budget, which you have later on. And this agenda item and then the next one that relates to the CEC are kind of a package deal to approve not only this project, but also the CEC 1% energy loan resolution as well. So any questions?
I want to be consistent because also in our meeting, I have a problem with a few of these points. So I just want to make it, put it on the record. The first one is I don't like the borrowing of the money. The second, the second of all, the second one is I don't like the carport. I've been involved with a few of these projects, and the last part of it, the 15.4 million estimate savings, somehow they never seem to pan out, and I, so I don't support that, and I said it in the beginning, so I'm going to have to stand by it. I just see too many problems with it.
Anyone else have any questions, or vice chancellor Stewart? You know, Trevor, as you pointed out, the biggest part of this is, is the, you know, LED technology with light fixtures just continues to get better and better. And when you look at the commercial-rated light fixtures, you're getting up there to about 50,000 hours of use. And that's continuous use. So if you left them on continually, they would last about 50,000 hours. That's a lot of time, and one thing that's not in here, it relates back to, in my opinion, Judy and her team. There's a savings there with not having to replace light bulbs and fluorescent bulbs and everything else. So that's a component of saving cost as well. The light that they emit, depending on the type you get, as you pointed out, is much better. The light bands are much better for classroom instruction and reading and seeing things. So there's a benefit there as well. We've said it before, the heartache we had in the past. We've said it before, the heartache we had in the past with, with one on air. I'm a solar proponent, but it's that long-term relationship and contractual maintenance relationship that's key. And unfortunately, we did the solar panels here and the vendor was not, didn't have a long-term record as this company does. And so we had a lot of, of components go bad. Now we have nobody to go back to. So that's one of the things, the Finance Committee looked at this and said, we need to find a vendor that has a track record. And I think, and I think you've done that. And the component of a change in culture of getting people used to, you know, we're not asking people to wear parkas up at Columbia in the wintertime. We're not asking that. But it's just changing, you know, temperature settings that if that area or classroom is going to be down for a period of time, remind ourselves to go back through and turn that down. So we've got those energy savings going forward. Because as we've stated, and we will state again, we need, we're going to have to be leaner and more efficient operation going forward. So with that, does anybody want to make a, okay, first of all, pardon me. This is a public hearing. So first, the Board conducts a public hearing regarding entering into an energy service contract with Compass Energy Solutions. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment? Don't rush it all at once. Okay. All right. With that, anyone out? Are you seeing anybody out in the virtual universe, Graciela?
No raised hands.
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing and, and bring it back to the Board for adoption of YCCD Resolution two-one-dash-two-two-point-two-six, authorizing an energy service contract with Compass Energy Solutions to assist YCD in implementing energy conservation measures at Modesto Junior College. I think you mean Modesto Junior College and Columbia, correct? Just Modesto?
Correct, just.
Just Modesto, okay.
So moved.
All right. So motion made by Trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion, but I, I appreciate Trustee Aguilar's comments.
Seconded by Trustee Margie Balkan. Any further discussion? Hey.
I had one question. What, what is the warranty on this project for the solar panels?
I actually have the vendor from Compass Energy here, and I think it'd be better for, for John Matisse or Judy Lanchester to respond to that.
You almost made it. Hey, you almost.
To second my motion with the gentleman about the firing squad. So warranty, very important. Because it's a relationship. And the, it's a relationship with us. Everything goes through us. Compass is a one-stop shop. We're a single point of contact. So for example, the inverters are ten-year warranty. Whether, whether they go down, whether the company goes out of business to install them, it goes through us. So it's no risk for the district. Same with the panels, and the panels are twenty years. LEDs at five years. But whatever happens during this period of time, everything goes through. We're an extension of the district. Basically with this project, it's a partnership. So that's how it's going to work. And I think everybody can appreciate that considering what's happened on the first go around. The original.
Absolutely.
That, that's a great point. I just met with City of Clovis, which I've been working with for thirteen years. And we've done eight solar projects with them and multiple energy-saving projects, LED, HVAC. And every couple of years, I put together a spreadsheet for them. At the beginning, we put together quarterly spreadsheets for them to see how things are going. And then now, looking back over five years increments, we're doing a spreadsheet form. So it is a partnership and it's all transparent.
Any, any other questions? Thank you very much. Hey, we've had a motion by Trustee Dr. Milton Richards, seconded by Trustee Margie Balkan. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar. I'm sorry, was that a nay? Vice Chair Beggs.
Hi.
Trustee Balkan.
Hi.
Trustee Hinton. Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And Chair Garrett.
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll go backwards in eight-point-three resolution two-one-dash-two-two-point-two-five, California Energy Commission Energy Loan Application for Funding of Energy Efficiency Project at Modesto Junior College.
This also requires a public hearing.
I got that underlined. So Trevor, do you have anything to add?
Nothing to add. This is just that second step associated with the last action.
Hey. And as mentioned by our Board's Tonographer, thank you, she's keeping me straight. This does require a public hearing. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on the California Energy Commission Loan Application for Funding Energy Efficiency Projects at Modesto Junior College? Again, let's not all crowd the podium at once.
I do not see any raised hands at Zoom either.
All right. With that, we'll bring it back to the Board for action. Is there a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-two point two-five.
Hey. And just for clarification, the adoption of Resolution authorizing the application of California Energy Commission one percent loan to assist in the funding of the energy-efficient projects at Modesto Junior College. Motion made by Margie Balkan. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Nancy Hinton. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar. Trustee Beggs. Vice Chair Beggs.
Hi.
Trustee Balkan.
Hi.
Trustee Hinton. Trustee Richards.
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau.
Yes.
And Chair Garrett.
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
Okay, we're moving on now to eight-point-five, YCCD General Fund Tentative Budget for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. And I believe that will be Trevor Stewart and Jeremy Salazar.
Just be neat for the most part when we get to the GAN limit and Proposition Thirty items. If you have questions, then we'll go Jeremy for that. So the tentative budget presentation that I'm going to be going through is essentially just the general fund. Obviously, you all received tentative budget packet, which goes into more detail on all the other funds of the district. Where am I pointing? Okay. Here are the items that we'll go through, really just in the budget process. We are, we've received the Governor's May revise in the top row. We have heard from the budget subcommittees and the conference committees. And now the legislature has actually enacted what they would like to see in the budget. So now we're at the Governor's consideration and approval, which is essentially the Governor working with the legislature, fine-tuning the two different proposals to come up with a final state budget, which we should be receiving before the end of June. Even after the state budget is signed into law, we do have trailer bill language. We have some changes that can occur several months down the line. But our goal is to get that information and be prepared to present to you a final budget in the month of September. The May revise for twenty-two-twenty-three includes a lot of great news, right? This is the best state budget that the state of California has ever seen. It includes a significant COLA. It includes funding rate increases for the Student Center Funding Formula. Includes base allocation increases for the CFF. Includes a lot of one-time money for getting students back, student enrollment retention. Another one for, essentially both of those for the same sort of purposes. The Governor's proposing a seven-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar block grant to help with one-time items that we may be facing. It could be person stirs, it could be facilities needs, it could be technology needs that we have. A new proposal that is in both the Governor's as well as the legislature is two-hundred million for part-time capital insurance. Compared to the four-hundred-and-ninety thousand that's in the ongoing budget, that's a very significant improvement, something that I think will be well-received by employees of this district. The Governor has about one-point-five billion in deferred maintenance, whereas the legislature has cut that number in half. Regardless if that number even comes in at the legislature number, this is a significant improvement than what we've had in many years in the past. So what is the tentative budget? The tentative budget, it's early, right? We don't have a state budget. T tentative budget gives us spending authority as we work to develop the final budget for you in September. It is based on the Governor's January tenth proposal. It does not necessarily include the May revise. There is a paragraph or two in this document for you, but it does not include it in the specific number. So our planning strategies, we utilize the resource allocation model through our DFAC group. Try to base this budget on realistic budget projections that we have at the time of preparation. Of course, we distinguish between one-time and ongoing. The idea of not spending more than your ongoing resources. As, as Trustee Garrett, Chair Garrett had pointed out earlier about being efficient, we do try to identify those efficiencies and try to improve our services in lower. So this is a chart that's cut out from your budget document. Our Fund eleven revenues total about one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-nine million dollars. You can see how those are made up of different sources. On the next screen, we have our expenditures. And on line ten in the middle of the screen, we point out our ongoing unrestricted general fund expenditures, that same number, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight-point-nine million. All intents and purposes, the tentative budget is a balanced budget. But because of certain needs that have been identified, we are intentionally utilizing reserves for three purposes down below. One is to increase the MJC operational budget. Their budget has grown tighter and tighter to serve the students that they are serving. If we are able to get more money, the goal is to move that into an ongoing expenditure. Energy efficiency. And then the final one is site-specific reserve expenditures for four-point-six million. So as you are aware, through DFAC, we've implemented a process where the sites are able to retain seventy-five percent of their reserves. And so in the current fiscal year, MJC did their processes and allocated out a hundred percent of their reserves. Columbia spent about thirty-three percent of their reserves and Central Services didn't spend any. In the upcoming budget year, again, we're projecting MJC to spend all of theirs. We're projecting Central Services to spend all of theirs on firewall and multi-factor authentication to protect our data. And again, Columbia to spend about one-third of their. Next screen shows you our fund balance amounts. I only want to focus on the far-right column for the tentative budget. So even with this tentative budget, with that deficit spending because of one-time allocations, at this point in time, we are presenting to you a total ending balance of twenty-seven-point-five million. You will note that the undesignated amount is a little over ten-point-three million. The required reserve, the ten percent for the Board, is set there up above at about thirteen-point-three million. You see the site-specific reserves being over five million, now down to about nine-hundred thousand. Of course, is to allow the sites to spend those dollars. So the, as we approach September and get to the final budget, fortunately, the current forecasting that we are doing shows the district instability protection with new revenues being less than the COLA that's being proposed by the Governor. So that is something we're very concerned about, need to take a closer look at as the state signs its budget. Will there be emergency conditions or an extension of the hold harmless provisions? Should YCCD on its own be looking at the emergency condition allowance? And would the Chancellor's Office support us if we bring that forward to the Board of Governors? Can the district grow its FTS as well as its metrics to the pre-COVID levels? We have to evaluate what is the size of our district as we continue to move forward. And should the district spend down reserves in one-time projects? Or should it maintain reserves for recession? And before I get to the questions segment, the only thing I wanted to point out within the document, of course, I want you to read it and understand it. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out through the Chancellor to me, and I'll be happy to, to share information with you. But the two things I want to point out are the bookstore and the bond funds. See that the twenty-two-twenty-three amounts are zeros. The goal is that by June thirtieth, we will have spent all of our bond funds. Those will be at zero. And then, of course, we're aware that the bookstores were transitioned over to Barnes and Noble College. And so why are those pages in the budget? Well, because they also report you the current year activities. And so at some point in time, those will fall out of this budget book. But for this year, they'll continue to be. So with that, are there any questions on some other?
Any questions for the Vice Chancellor?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
First of all, Trevor, thank you so much. You always make it so easy to understand and clear. Could I get a copy of the slide? I mean, I have the packet, but the slides summarize a few of the pages. So I would love to get a copy of that. And I really liked your questions on the second to the last slide, especially the last question about reserve for an economic uncertainties or recession. That's somewhat rhetorical. My question is, but real, because you know how I feel about that. But when you said the May revision isn't included in this, was it because of the timing of this budget of preparation?
Because of the timing.
Okay.
We get that around mid-May.
Right.
We've already been working with DFAC and other groups to go through the resource allocation model process. That is a longstanding process of this district. Some districts do it different, but at this point in time, it does make sense to me that we continue with that strategy.
Great. I just wanted to understand why. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Excuse me.
Trustee Balkan, just to point out, it is part of your printed packet, page ninety-six. But I know that you, you received the budget book.
As I stated earlier, at the Board Finance Committee, we went over the proposed budget as, as presented to everyone tonight. And we, myself, Trustee Richards and Trustee Aguilar, we had previously asked of our facilities director, Judy Lanchester, to come up with what are your needs district-wide? And so we got this, obviously, we got this big, big list. And obviously, there's no way we can, we can do that. So we said pare it down to what is immediate. Like, we're at emergency conditions. And so she did that at Monday's meeting. And at the top of that list, something that comes as no surprise to Dr. Richards and Trustee Aguilar and myself, is the press box. Excuse me, the press box and the football stadium, the bleachers at the MJC East Campus. You know, if you know Judy at all, you know, if she can make something work and stretch it out, she's gonna, she's gonna do that. She's gonna make it last as long as, as possibly she can. When Judy tells you that I can get about another year out of it at the most, and I'm talking about the press box, you need to take her seriously. So what we're asking tonight is that we take ten million dollars and move it into the capital of projects budget. The stadium cost is a little over four million dollars because we want to do it all at once. The stadium cost is a little over 4 million dollars because we want to do it all at once. Uh, that includes the press box and, and the bleachers. Now, one might ask, well, why don't we just wait until we see what the state budget is going to do with what Trevor pointed out as deferred maintenance? That project does not classify as deferred maintenance. So though we could not use those funds for that purpose. Um, so put 10 million in there, we'll spend the four, we're going to leave the six alone. And the purpose behind that is it allows Judy to then start getting the paperwork and everything ready uh, for when we either get 8 million under the legislative proposal or we could be looking at 16 plus million um, under the governor's proposal. Then when we're ready, she's, she's got stuff ready for what we call shovel-ready projects that, that fall under deferred maintenance. And we can then immediately move forward with those projects because there are a lot uh, that need our attention right now. We're talking asbestos removal, unsafe carpet conditions, potholes and parking lots where we're going to lose parking lots. So there's a long list of things that fall under the umbrella of deferred maintenance. This large project does not fall under that. So that's the one change that we have to, to uh, this particular item and 8.5. So does anyone have any comments in regards to that?
I just have a question around the number, uh, how that's derived at 10 million. I mean, I'm just trying to understand that number.
Judy, you want to come up and provide some?
We'll start with that. So trustee Balkan, in the presentation of the, the critical needs that were identified by Judy and her team, those costs came in over 17 million, close to 18 million. And obviously, as I pointed out, in our reserves, we do have an undesigned amount, a little over 10 million, 10.3 million. So do they correlate? Yes, they do correlate.
Thank you.
So that's the only change to, to what was given to you in, in the budget proposal packet. With that change, again, does anybody have any, any questions? Hey, would anyone like to make a motion with that? A motion by trustee Aguilar to approve with the changes noted.
I'll second that.
Seconded by trustee Margie Balkan. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Hi.
Trustee Balkan?
Yes.
Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
Vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Hey, we'll move on now to item 8.6, establishment of the 2022-2023 appropriations limit. Vice Chancellor Stewart.
It's one of those silly things in law. Um, I, I'm glad that someone at least can nod their head that, why do we do this? Um, my goal for next year, just so you know, is that the, the three items, the tentative budget, the GAN limit and the Prop 30 will all be included in the budget packet so we can kind of make one fell swoop of it, if you will. Uh, but this is something that is required that we do to set our appropriation limit. What's very interesting, you might hear about this on the statewide level, is the state may reach this limit as, as all state government. And we'll have to look at how do we put money back into the hands of taxpayers? For us, even if we were to exceed it, that is okay. The state just adjusts from district to district. So we do this annually and that's it. We seek approval and, and we move along and we let the state deal with our acceptance of this document.
So the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopts a report attached to the June 8, 2022 Agenda establishing the 2022-2023 appropriation limit. Add, is there a motion?
Is there, isn't it called the GAN limit though? Why is it approached, why is it being called appropriations limit?
The GAN appropriations limit.
Okay.
So moved.
The name of a senator.
Right. Second that.
Hey, motion made by trustee Richards and seconded by trustee Margie Balkan. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Hi.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Hi.
Trustee Balkan?
Hi.
Trustee Hinton? Trustee Richards?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
Vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Hey, item 8.7, Proposition 30 Education Protection Account. I read that because if I say EPA, you'll think it's something different. Um, the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approves the expenditure of education protection account funds as instructional salaries and benefits as noted on the June 8, 2022 Agenda. It's important to note that this is not new or increased revenue, but rather a new source of revenue towards total apportionment. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Balkan. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Nancy Hinton. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Hi.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Hi.
Trustee Balkan?
Hi.
Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
Vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Moving right along, uh, we'll move on to 8.8 Columbia College, College and Career Pathways or CCAP partnership agreement. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees, one, take comments from the public on the item and two, approves the College and Career Access Pathways or CCAP partnership agreement uh, for Columbia College attached to the June 8, 2022 Agenda. And this would be a partnership agreement between the Yosemite Community College District and Bret Hart Union High School District.
There are no raised, there are no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay. And, and trustee Balkan, since this is in your backyard?
So moved.
Okay. Moved by trustee Balkan. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by trustee Leslie Beggs. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Hi.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Hi.
Trustee Balkan?
Hi.
Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Now, just for entertainment and to repeat myself, item 8.9 is a CCAP partnership agreement uh, with the Somerville Union High School District. And the recommended action is the same as before, take comments from the, the public on the item and approve the College and Career Pathways partnership agreement for Columbia College attached to the June 8, 2022 Agenda. Do we see any raised hands?
No raised hands.
Okay.
The podium.
No one rushing the podium. Okay. We'll bring it back to the board and again, since this is in your back.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Balkan. Thank you.
Second.
Well, it's a toss-up, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it to Nancy Hinton. So first by Margie Balkan, seconded by Nancy Hinton. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Hi.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Hi.
Trustee Balkan?
Hi.
Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
Yes.
But again, it's seven zero, motion carries.
Hey, item 8.10, governing board member election. That the Board of Trustees adopt YCCD Resolution Number 21-22.27 ordering an election to be conducted on November 8, 2022 in the Yosemite Community College District and direct that the adopted resolution be filed with the Stanislaw Superintendent of Schools prior to July 8, 2022. I'm just going to read this, a governing board election for the positions of trustee area one, which is trustee Balkan. Um, trustee area two, which is trustee Nancy Hinton. And trustee area four, which is trustee Jenny Nicolau in the Yosemite Community College District will be conducted on Tuesday, November 8, 2022. In order to properly schedule the election, the Board of Trustees must adopt a resolution including specifications of the election order and file the same with the county superintendent of schools prior to July 8, 2022. So with that, is there a motion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, why, uh, in that my trustee area, is it not filed with the Toowalamie County Superintendent of Schools? Why only Stanislas for trustees areas one in particular?
We work with Stanislas County, the local county district, and then they in turn work with the other counties.
Got it. Thank you, Gracila.
I would, I would imagine that just like the elections officer would cross file, he'll probably cross file with Toowalamie County. So with that, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, we're gonna give it to trustee Jenny Nicolau. We thought we'd lost you there for a while. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Anything further? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Hi.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Hi.
Trustee Balkan?
Hi.
Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
Vote is seven zero, motion carries.
Hey, we'll move on now to item 8.11, Personnel Approval of Employment Contract for Vice Chancellor Educational Support Services. And the recommended action is that the Board of Trustees approves the employment contract for the Vice Chancellor of Educational Support Services. And I'm, bear with me, I'm required to read this out aloud. Uh, item 8.11 is approval of the employment contract for Vice Chancellor Educational Support Services. Pursuant to Government Code Section 53262, before the board can take action on an item regarding the salary or fringe benefits of an executive officer, which includes president, um, well, which would include the Vice Chancellor of Educational Support Services. The key terms of the proposed agreement must be read into the minutes. The key terms of this agreement are as follows. The term shall be from June 20th, 2022 through June 30th, 2024. Employees' annual salary shall be on the executive salary schedule range E4 step D in an amount of 231,237 dollars. A longevity bonus of 5,000 dollars for each year of employment, so long as administrator remains employed for a period of 24 months, up to 10,000 dollars. A 20,000 dollar housing incentive benefit contingent on 24 months of service. Other fringe benefits include health, dental and vision, insurance, income protection and a 50,000 dollar life insurance policy. And the motion will include to delegate authority to the chancellor uh, to revise employment contracts, including revising provisions to make any bonuses enter forgivable loans non-pensionable to the extent permitted by law. So having read all that, um, is there a motion? I mean, I just.
So moved.
So moved by trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Nancy Hinton. Anything further?
I just want to say thank you to GH as we pass this baton to potentially approve this person to um, follow in your footsteps and for the great work you've done while you've been here. Really appreciate your service.
Yes, thank you very much. Roll call vote, please. Did you get who made the motion and who seconded it?
I have trustee Richards and trustee Hinton as a second.
Got it.
So trustee Aguilar?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Hi.
Trustee Balkan?
Hi.
Trustee Hinton?
Hi.
Trustee Richards?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
Chair Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is seven zero, motion carries.
It will move on to item 8.12, Music Faculty Hiring Petition. As of May 11th, uh, 2022, Board Regular Meeting, trustee Hinton requests a future agenda item request to discuss the music faculty hiring petition. Previously seen by the Board of Trustees, staff will inform the, the Board of the College Faculty Hiring Prioritization Process. So I know we have two members of the public, well, hold on just a moment. Let's, I think it's beneficial if you get everything and then you can, I'll hold it and you can comment on everything at the end. So, um, who do we have from, I know I see Dean Sunquist and Mike, thank you for being here. Uh, I know you're, you're, you're getting ready and your mind's probably already moving forward with, with retirement. But we appreciate you being here and if you can come up and maybe shed some light on, on all of this.
You're live.
Let's see, I know there's a petition and I think I'm here to talk about the process for hiring prioritization at the college.
Yeah, and, and I think it would be helpful to give us an update of specifically that area and where we stand right now and, and enrollment and things like that.
Okay, sure. So, uh, fortunately, we, or unfortunately, we had two requirements in the music program at MJC this year. And so we knew about those retirements as we moved into what we refer to as the hiring prioritization process at MJC, which is a, a multi-step process that starts at the department level where individual departments can prioritize their faculty positions going forward for a request to replace. It moves on to a discussion at our division level. And after that, uh, those positions are prioritized there and moved on to the college level where there is a committee that is composed of faculty, uh, members and other staff members to look at the, uh, requests that have come in from the divisions and prior, they are prioritized at that. Uh, and then that list is sent forward to the college council and to the college president for review and action. And the college president has the final decision on how to rank those requests that have come forward from the basic level of the departments all the way through the college council. So, uh, the challenge this year was that there were, um, more retirements than there were positions available for funding uh, moving into the next year. And so not all of the requests could be, could be funded. It's unfortunate. If this were the college of Mike Sunquist, I would have immediately, uh, said, let's go forward with the music hires. But it's not, so we, um, we're disappointed. Uh, but, um, the, the music program will move forward, um, in a slightly different way using part-time instructors uh, this year for those, uh, those class sections. Um, the department is doing very well. I lost my notes here. Um, we have 53 active declared music majors and, uh, each semester, we have about 55 sections that we offer in music and general music education and also applied music and, and other courses. Um, and we offer a variety of, uh, classes in vocal music, piano, commercial music, string band, jazz, electronic music, guitar. So, uh, I think that wraps up the situation that we're hopeful to go through the process again uh, because it starts in the fall every year, hiring prioritization across the campus. And I'm sure the, uh, school will be sending forward a request for those two music positions in addition to a theater position that was not completely hired as a tenure track position. And so we follow the process and we're disappointed, but we're moving forward.
And I want to go back to what you just said at the end. Uh, so this isn't the end of this, this position. It's just based on the prioritization and we're going to resubmit that position again in the fall.
Right. With the sections that were taught by the two retiring. Right, with the sections that were taught by the two retiring professors, uh, will be taught in the, this coming fiscal year by part-time instructors. Uh, and we have a chance to resubmit.
And, and what is your sense when you, when it res submits, I know that will be, the baton will be passed on to the new dean, but what is your, what is your sense, Mike?
Well, I, 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 I don't know, I don't know what the funding picture is going forward. I do know that the music program has deep roots in the community. Uh, and there are, uh, are businesses associated with supporting, uh, the program in the community and music in general in the community. So, and we have deep roots in the, uh, K through twelve system as well, supporting their work. So, uh, I'm hopeful that, uh, those roots will take hold and, uh, will help support the, uh, proposals that we'll have.
I have a question. Um, oh wait, Nancy, you were first, go ahead. So the part-time instructors that you referred to are, they're, uh, experienced and, um, potentially could, or. I mean, I guess that's the first question. I mean, they're, they're experienced with the program and are they, are they brand new to the program?
Well, uh, we haven't hired all of them at, at this point. I, I, I came to this meeting after doing an interview for vocal position. And it says someone that would be new to the college.
Okay.
Um, but we always interview and look for the best expertise that we find locally. The challenge with the program, must have a, a master's degree in music to teach music. Uh, there are many musicians out there, uh, who have their instruments, uh, but don't meet our minimum qualifications. So that's a challenge in our.
So, but I guess the investment in these part-time instructors could, could in and of themselves potentially, potentially work to continue to grow the program. I mean, so that, right, and that's the idea is?
Oh, yes, it's a, it's a bridge right now as we approach this, uh, challenge, uh, but, uh, my sense is that it's always best to have a, a full-time instructor leading the area because they provide, um, leadership. They're able to do recruiting activities and other things that, uh, part-time instructors don't.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Hinton?
Um, I was, I was one who brought this up, um, as an agenda item. Having been involved in the arts, um, for many years and feeling the importance of building a bridge for more FTSs through our K-12 system, bridging right into some of the music programs that we've offered over the years. And all I wanted was to bring it out and have us look at it, even if it's next, you know, for next year. But that we need to keep our music programs, our art programs alive because they do draw in students that are looking for, you know, to graduate with degrees and different things and we, we can use them to, to bring in finances. You have programs, you have, you know, symphonies, there's all kinds of programs that are offered and it opens the door for the public to get involved in MJC. And that's what I want us to be, to make sure that we're looking at, is what can we offer to get community involvement to, um, help grow the, uh, programs that we have here at MJC and to let people know what we have to offer.
I would say that our MJC orchestra is a fine example of that outreach into the community. Um, we have, uh, local musicians who have, uh, expertise on their instruments, sitting alongside our, uh, traditional, uh, students, uh, from MJC. They're all students, they're all in the program, uh, but, uh, we can't, we can't have, uh, a complete orchestra for our, uh, majors to participate in unless we have community support. You, you can't come to an orchestra and not have a whole set of violin and sort of instruments, so.
President of MJC, you raised your hand.
Yes, I did, and, uh, thank you, Mike, for taking all these questions, and this is a very complex issue when we talk about faculty prioritization. Because ultimately, the buck stops at the president's office and I have the responsibility of prioritizing the faculty hiring. So I need to address this concern, that what are the variety of factors that we have to take into consideration? At the outset, I would say that thankfully, uh, music and athletics, those are the two areas that attracts community members. And that's why those are the two areas that I hear from people saying, we need to have a full-time faculty members. If I had all the eighty-three different disciplines that we teach, and if a chemistry student are in short supply or nursing and so on and so forth, I don't know how I would be balancing that load. Every area honestly requires more full-time faculty members if we have to dedicate full-time faculty members only to teach all the classes. The reality is, we do not have enough funding to provide full-time faculty members in each of the areas. So when we look at this, that how do we prioritize? First of all, there is a process that we define, and the process, uh, Mike has articulated, how it goes from looking at the data, looking at the numbers, looking at the structures. When I look at these numbers, uh, I'm just looking at a figure, that's MJC's top and bottom ten programs for availability of quality jobs with number of graduates. We look at this kind of statistic, and these are not done by us, these are done by national authorities like Brookings Institution. The top ten programs that I have in MJC, and we talk about availability of quality jobs in this area. By a quality job, we mean which pays living wage, which pays healthcare benefit, which generates enough savings for people to buy homes. Programs are geography, respiratory care, adult development and aging, recording arts, technology or technician, computational sciences, electrician, geology, earth science, registered nurse, computer science, computer programming. Those are the top ten. Bottom ten. Music general, nursing assistant or aide, music theater, childcare provider assistant, dance general, ethnic studies, liberal arts, humanities, philosophy, educational, uh, special educational programs. Now, when I balance this, when I look at this, this is not an exact science that I say, I would only fund the top ten and I would not fund the bottom ten, because we're a holistic college. We have to look at that entire picture to see that how the whole industry is moving, how the demands are moving. When you delve deeper into this, music general, music theater, dance general, they are not having those many attractive jobs in our area. Versus when you look at recording arts, technology, technician, thanks to internet, how do we distribute music? That is exponentially growing, job opportunities are coming out there. So as we transition into this new era, that those are the, those are the areas that the students want to learn music, what kind of faculty hiring should be there? That is the kind of depth that we get into, and when any industry is in transition, when we have a full-time faculty hire with a specific specialization, we are talking about a commitment of ten, twenty, thirty years at a time. When industries are at a stable state, like if we hire a chemistry faculty member, that person would be teaching chemistry. Chances of chemistry not being the same in the next twenty years is very remote. But chances of music being exponentially different from what it is today is reasonably high. That's why these areas, we have the flexibility offered by the state also, that can we make do with a part-time hire? I'm completely cognizant of why it's important for us in order to build the bridge with the community. No community member comes to see a chemistry lab experimentation, but they come to see our pro performances, performing arts. That's how we would like to remain a community's college. But when we come to this, we balance the dollar amounts, we balance the need for the jobs, and we balance the transition of the careers that's coming in. That's where we say sometimes, for a period of time when it's in flux, it's better to go for a part-time person. So we know which way the wind is blowing before we make a final determination. So we would make do with this, we are not cutting back on the program's demand or satisfy the demands, but we would like to see which way the wind is blowing. And if we really determine that, you know, upcoming areas, truly, we would service our students, communities, and everyone better by looking at more of the recording arts, technology, technician kind of areas. They also need knowledge of, knowledge of music, and I can be a computer geek, but I would not be producing music if I don't have that training. So we might be getting trainers in those areas. That is the complexity that we are dealing with, and that's one of the rational why we went for a part-time faculty member in this go-around. To talk about the future, what remains in future, it's anybody's guess. How it is going to change, it's anybody's guess. But again, when that next round comes up, we would look at the department division to prioritize departments, as you saw from Dean Sunquest, that they're always passionate to advocate for the program. Now, when I have twenty-five positions to fund for, I have funding for fifteen, it's a musical chair, but that musical chair comes with a reason. And we do this very seriously, I personally take this as much seriousness as possible, and we spend many, many hours in deliberating and looking at the options, where we can fill these options, and then we make a decision. I'm here to answer any other questions also if you have.
I think we've, we've gotten a lot here, so I think in fairness, we need to, uh, ask now the, the public speakers, Katrina Van Waltrip? Sure, and that would be Gretel Newman, okay.
Um, good evening, Board of Trustees. My name is Gretel Newman. I currently teach elementary music for Modesto City Schools and have been playing in the oboe in the community orchestra for the past seven years. This is the statement that was emailed to the YCCD Board of Trustees. It is my understanding that Ann Martin will be retiring after the spring semester two thousand twenty-two. I am writing to voice my concerns about not replacing her with a full-time strings instructor. First, Ms. Martin's courses provide music instruction and instruments to students, many of whom are underserved in our community. Most of these students lack the funds to rent or purchase their own instruments and certainly are unable to afford private music lessons. It is important to note that Martin's courses are consistent with and serve to fulfill the college's own mission statement of, quote, motivating and encouraging low-income, first-generation, college-bound students to enroll in post-secondary education programs. Second, Ms. Martin's has devoted, developed programs which provide clinics to students in the K-12 school systems in our area. An activity, again, that links the educational mission of the college to the larger educational community. These clinics and special events such as High School Orchestra Day serve to recruit students to MJC. Further, the MJC Community Orchestra of sixty-seven players is a well-respected ensemble that draws a large number of audiences to campus twice a year. Orchestra members provides members of the community their only opportunity to play in an organized context. It's important to note that this orchestra is as old as the universe, as the college which celebrated its one-hundredth anniversary last year. Finally, I'm sure decisions about hiring are based on strong economic consideration. However, I wonder by what financial calculus the gain of not replacing Ms. Martin was weighed against the loss in goodwill in her programs have generated for MJC. And if future semester, students will cease to look to MJC for instruction in violin, viola, cello, and bass. In a single semester, high school music programs will no longer look to MJC for assistance in stringed instruction. Also, community members will no longer have a viable outlet for their musical expression. Also, what will the cost be of rebuilding these lost links to the community, links which have generated so much goodwill towards MJC? I can only encourage you to reconsider your decision not to rehire a full-time strings instructor to reevaluate your equation to include these and other intangible costs to the college of not replacing Ms. Martin. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good evening, MJC Board of Trustees. My name is Katrina Van Waltrip. I teach elementary band and strings in Modesto City Schools and I'm also chairperson of K-eight music in the district. I'm here to support the MJC string program and the community orchestra. I am a product of this program, which I began in nineteen seventy-five, when the Modesto Symphony gave the MJC music department a donation of a thousand dollars to start a Suzuki violin program. I was in the first group of twelve students we met at MJC for many years. I played in the orchestra in high school because I love playing in an orchestra. Following high school, I attended MJC, focusing on my music, continuing Suzuki and the orchestra. I transferred to San Francisco State and received a music education degree, a single subject music credential. On returning to Modesto, I once again played in the orchestra. This program is so important to our string community. It provides string day for our high schools orchestras and an ensemble for students to play in when they attend MJC. We hired a new music teacher this, for next year. She was, went through a local school program, attended MJC, transferred to an university, and just finished her credential. I am happy that string students are coming back to teach in our community, which would be, wouldn't be possible if this program doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to note that it's, you know, we rarely get people here from the public, and, and, uh, as you can tell, look how long it's taken to get to this item, but, uh, it, it's refreshing that you've taken of your precious time, uh, you know, this evening to address something that's very important to both of you. And I know you represent more than just the two of you, so we, we do appreciate you coming forward and, and being a voice for the community, so thank you both very much. So does anyone else have any other comments?
Does that include us?
Yeah, nope.
Okay, yeah. Um, you know, when the public comes, we're, we really can't dialogue with you because we're just here to hear, but I echo the chair's comments. Thank you for coming. I'm wondering, um, and thank you, Dr. Bondepaier, for, for, you know, the picture and understanding and the dean to give that, uh, prioritization. I, I understand it, I mean, I understand that, um, but I'm wondering, as we move forward, um, if we can't figure out some creative ways, seeing that there's elementary school and, you know, the K-12 system reaching up to, to help, reaching up to help, um, it just reminds me of the importance of a K-14 partnership. That is there, is there a creative way into the future to find a way to look for our college students in the classrooms of our elementary schools and high schools? And take our C cap agreements there? And that might be a creative way to build, um, and ha, I'm, I'm a K-12 career educator and have watched music suffer and our souls be depleted. Um, but I'm wondering if that might be, oh, a, a, an experiment, um, to partner in, under some kind of C cap agreement, as an example, to reach down i- i- into the arms of our future college students to find a way to build the program there. And thank you, thank you for being here.
Yes. That's an excellent idea, and I think I also want to make a distinction that not hiring a full-time string faculty member is not the demise of the program. We have complete commitment to the program. There are many programs which run without a full-time instructor, but that does not really decimate the program. Particularly when I see so much of, uh, passion amongst the community members, among those who are teaching in the schools. One of the parts that the full-time faculty member plays also is outreach. Now, with this, we can definitely go for a C cap route to, to fill up the void of that outreach, to maintain that, yes, we do have instructors and we maintain this program. So it is not a zero-one situation, that if we don't have a full-time faculty member, this program would fall off the charts, or we would not still have these classes going forward. We can definitely look at the creative ways.
See someone with their hand raised, if you want to approach the, the microphone and, and just give us your name and.
My name is Steve Thomas, uh, I'm a community member. I, um, have a violin shop, uh, downtown Modesto on K Street, and, um, I have been working to maintain and supply, uh, MJC with violins, violas, and cellos, and strings, and bows for the last several years that I've been here. several years that I've been here. I just wanted to voice just a couple things and reiterate some of the comments that I heard. And one of you mentioned that if students go away, will they come back? And I thought that was a significant statement, given your concerns about enrollment and the reduction in enrollment over time. I also want to point out that the retirement video that you showed, there was a lot of background music in that video, and I thought that was, you know, when you want to know where, what, what is the place of music in our Western civilized culture? It seems to be everywhere, doesn't it? I didn't hear a lot of guitars in that. But the other point that I want to make is that what I hear your plan is, is to piecemeal this program in the coming year. When I think about what Ann Martin has been able to do, I, I, I don't think you could replace her with three individuals full-time. I'm always impressed by the faculty members that I've met that teach here, their energy, their dedication, their intelligence, and Ann Martin certainly fulfills all of that. When you look at the kind of synergistic program she's been able to create, not only with students attending classes, but bringing community members in the night orchestra in, as well as outreach to the K through 12 environment in Modesto, I don't see how piecemealing this with part-time instructors is going to sustain that program even for a year. And the thing that I worry about most is that you're going to lose that really wonderful goodwill that the community has for this program and for MJC in particular. I, I just would hate to see you lose that. And so thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you very much. Trustee Nicolau?
Thank you, Chair Garrett. My video has given me some trouble, so I'm going to keep it off so that you can all hear me. Um, you know, as I listen to folks, it really dawns on me that in times of hurting, that our country needs healthy emotional outlets more than ever. So I personally am not musically inclined, but I'm so thankful and respectful for those in the arts. I fully believe in the power of music, and I believe in giving our young adults a healthy outlet to express emotions. I can't help but think about what went on in Texas, like these people who are just hurting, how could, how can we reach them? And if that means that we hope to prioritize a position, I just want to go on record that I strongly encourage MJC leadership, don't put this on the back burner. This is something our community is asking for. We, as a board, are here to serve our students and our community. And as we look at mental health, as we look at bringing our community together, what an easy way to do that, and that's by prioritizing this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nicolau. So just one final, one avenue that is common in, in higher ed, it's typically more common in, in four-year institutions. And here locally, you, you have a outlet of voice, so to speak, and that's the MJC Foundation. So one thing that, that the, the local music community could do, I'm not saying that this is going to replace what you heard from Dean Sunquest, that his instructors in his department are committed to getting this position back to a full-time position. You've heard him say that tonight. And I think the president and his cabinet have heard that from not only the community members, but from a number of trustees. But when I mention the foundation, and that is going out to the community through the foundation and getting an endowed position through the music department, that's one way, that way you have a dedicated position, or you may be in the form of dedicated funding to the music department at MJC as a whole. So that's one avenue that, that you could explore as a music community. Does that help? So any, any further comments or discussion? Okay, again.
I actually had a question for Mike. How much of what Ann Martin did was, because I keep hearing that she needs to be replaced by three full-time people? How much of what she did was actually part of her job description? Because it sounds like we'd need a whole army of adjuncts, and I agree, it would be very disjointed.
Well, Ann's a very special person, and she, I think everything that she was doing is in her job description, but the degree to which she did those tasks and that work was so outstanding. And I, I recognize the passion from the community members that spoke here, but you had a full stage recently at a concert that, of musicians that recognized her work. She, her outreach into the community, but also into the K through 12 system was above and beyond the call of duty each and every year that she's been here. And so I think that's why they're talking about needing three people to replace her. I, I can, I can agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I, I just want to say, I, I agree with what, what Jenny said. You know, this is, this is a performing arts community. We have ballet companies, we have Opera Modesto, we have Mo Band, and we have community orchestra, and we have all of it tied in to MJC. And anything that gets students to our campus to, to have this creative outlet is wonderful. And even the people in the majors that make a lot of money might be part of our community orchestra. So, you know, we, it's an outlet for a lot of us. So thank you very much for coming and talking to us.
Hey, with that, we'll move on to item 8.13. Huh? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I know, it's hard to see fast. I think the legislation of California has stopped that music and arts are important to our K-14 schools, because this last year, we were able to work on a petition, that there were several petitions out in the public, and this petition came out. And within a month and a half, I think it was six weeks, it had enough signatures from the California voters to get it on the ballot, it'll be on the ballot this November, to bring in more money for those two programs. So I think we need to take that as an even bigger grasp of the community and the importance, and also file to get some of that money so we can continue our program.
Thank you, Trustee Hinton. Move on now to item 8.13, YCCD Resolution 21-22.28. This is a continuing authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to AB 361. So this is routine and customary business. I don't think I need to go into the details. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Pushed by Trustee Dr. Milton Richards. Is there a second?
Second.
Again by Trustee Nicolau. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Aguilar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Beggs?
Aye.
Trustee Balkan?
No.
Trustee Hinton? Trustee Richard?
Yes.
Trustee Nicolau?
Yes.
And Chair Garrett?
No.
The vote is five in favor to opposed. Motion carries.
Hey, move on now to item 9.1, Request for Future Board Agenda Items. Any board member wish to have any future agenda items?
I have one actually for the Policy Committee, and I wanted to thank Trustee Beggs for bringing it to my attention, as I was involved in creating a process by which we evaluate our chancellor, and she reminded me that needs to be reviewed into policy, that, and we follow this process as a board, which made it really easy, I think, to, to get it done efficiently. But I, I know Trustee Beggs knows this, but we need to get it over to the Policy Committee.
Anyone else have anything for future agenda items?
I, I think it would be great if we could have a presentation on the enrollment process. We keep hearing problems with the website, et cetera, and I think maybe different departments do different things, but I think it'd be nice if we could. I've even thought of like walking through the process as a board ourselves, like just saying, hey, we want to take a class, maybe from Ann Martin? No. We want to take a class, and how do we do it? And just go through that process, see, so that we know firsthand what it's like.
I second that.
I think the last time we did that, and she's here tonight, I think Vice President Zella walked, walked us through that. Do you remember that? Been a while ago, but yeah, we probably do need an update. Oh, yep, that was the last time we had it. It's been a number of years ago now. Anyone else? Okay, last chance. Okay, comments from the Board of Trustees. We'll go with our virtual, excuse me, members first. Trustee Dr. Milton Richards?
Shockingly, nothing tonight.
Oh, bless you. Trustee Nicolau?
No comment. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Balkan?
I want to welcome Maria Marquez as the trustee for the Board, student trustee. I'm not sure if she's still on, but want to welcome her, and it, it's nice to see her transition from the position of the Academic Senate now over to the Board, and it, it's lovely to have you and look forward to working with you this year. Also, to Nialani Pitzer and Andrew Echeverria, even though we didn't meet Andrew tonight, but I look forward to hearing from him. And then I, I commented, lastly, when I drove here, you know, it's been so long, as many have said, that we've been here, and it's so nice to be in person, and it's just wonderful. But I drive here from Twain Heart, and it takes me about an hour and a half to get here. And I sing along the way. I wish they could have heard me say that, but I do, I listen to music along the way. But I'm struck by the footprint of the reach of our college. When I drive from Twain Heart, which isn't even the border, I mean, of the footprint of our district, and I'm still driving an hour and a half later, and I'm still, I'm not even halfway through the, the footprint, and I look around the neighborhoods and think, who's benefiting, you know, from this great, both institutions? So it just struck me with such pride as I was making that long drive down here and thinking how wonderful it is that this college and Columbia College exists. So thank you. That's all.
Trustee Hinton?
I would like to thank Dr. Java Haripour for the time that you've put in here. I know it hasn't been easy for you, but you've done us, you've done well. And also, Jennifer, I wish you well. I have friends that live down there, so they are involved with a whole AVER community, and it's a great community to be involved in. So I wish you well down there. And that's been it, not it, because I'll get emotional.
Thank you, Trustee Hinton. Trustee Aguilar? No comment. Trustee Beggs?
Well, I echo what everybody else has said so far. I was at the Trio Annual Advisory Committee meeting earlier today at 10:00, and I walked out and I just thought, what a beautiful campus. It, it's just gorgeous, the trees. This was on the East Campus, but it was just so nice to be back. And I also, this past month, I was part of the Stanislas 2030 Talent Development Work Group, where I met Dr. Vicky Trask, who was mentioned earlier. And that's another great activity where we're working with employers in our area. So there's some exciting stuff happening in, in that area. And I'm glad to hear that Chad Redwing is our new point person on accreditation. He does a fabulous job with whatever he touches, so a lot of good stuff going on. Thank you.
I just want to echo, welcome our new student leaders. Again, I, I thank you for your commitment, not only of your time and time away from your studies, but your commitment to your fellow students. We do, we do appreciate that, and, and being a conduit for the board and the, and the student body as a whole. Again, Jennifer, wish you all the best on your, on your new adventure, your new journey. I, I just, exciting times for you, and I, and I wish you and your family all the best as you embark on this, on this new adventure. So all the best. And GH, thank you again. I echo those comments. We will miss you, and to you and your family, again, we wish you all the best as well, and whatever life has for you, take care, and thank you again for everything that you've done. And with that, next meeting, next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held on June. Oh, sorry. See, I'm getting ahead of myself. Student trustees?
Yes. Can everybody hear me? Okay, good. Um, just, we already, just saying thank you. It's, I'm really happy to be here again. So I really want to say congratulations to Nialani. I've met her before, and I'm so happy for her through this journey, along with the new president of Columbia College as well. And that's pretty much it for my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And my apologies for forgetting you. I promise I won't do that in the future, so thank you. Okay, and with that, the next meeting.
Oh. One quick invitation for everybody.
Okay.
Fourth of July parade in Modesto. We are the grand marshals this year.
Wonderful.
Means one of us will be sitting in a car at 110 degrees and waiting for two and a half hours. I don't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing, but we are also putting a float on behalf of the college. Our Arts Department is making that float in the shape of a, I would not disclose what it is. It's going to be interesting and exciting. We're participating, it's an invitation to all of you, if you want to be present or full or part of the parade, please do so. Fourth of July, date is easy to remember, temperature predicted to be 115 degrees.
Oh, President B, I just wanted on the record that thank you for doing that, and our prior trustee, Andy Martini, has talked about that for a long time, and so now we're here, thanks to you and your team. So thank you very much for doing that, and it's going to be hot, so good luck with that. So, and you, what you should do to, to help, put an invitation out to the trustees, if you want some, some people to partake with you, I would say suffer, but let's use partake. So, oh, thanks. Appreciate that. So the next regular meeting will be on July 13, 2022. Close session will begin at 3:00, open session at 5:30, and we will be at Columbia College again. So with that, this meeting stands adjourned.